Good evening and welcome to the Independent City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, October 27th, 2020 at 6:30 in the evening. Just to let folks know, things are a little different today because of the governor's new rules. I am sitting alone in the council chambers. City Recorder Karen Johnson is in the entryway and City Manager Tom Pesamir is up in his office. When any people are in the council chamber tonight, I will have to put my mask on. And when there are no people in the room, I can have my mask off. So just so that you know what we're doing as we're following the new governor's rules. Let the record show that all the counselors are here, happy and excited. I had to come up with something like that. Council members, you have the minutes of the October 13th meeting in front of you. Do they meet with your approval? I see Councilor Martin Willis shaking her head. I assume that that is a motion to approve. Is that correct? Counselor Morton seconds. All the favor signify by saying aye. And any objection? Hearing no objection, the motion carries. We have several presentations tonight and they're going to go in this order. Danny Jaffer from the Lions Club will be the first presenter. Then Brent Demoe and Commissioner Pope from Pope County will be talking about childcare grants and other projects. And then we have a community person, Mr. Wixon, who will like to speak to us. So, Mr. Jaffer, please join us. Good evening and welcome to the city council.
Good evening, Mayor. And good evening, city council members. Good to see you all here, even if it is in a very small screen. I'm Danny Jaffer and I'm representing the Central Lions Club. And as you know, I try not to make this too long, but as you know, for the last nine years, actually eight, because we had canceled this year. But for eight years, we held our Lions Club Car Show in the Riverview Park. And it has been a great, great activity for us. Not only have we brought in many, many cars that people can take a look at, but it's just a great event. Fundraise for the Lions Club, but also to just bring the community out. It's always, we've always felt like it's the big last event of the summer in Riverview Park. And so we really appreciate everything the City of Independence has done to facilitate that. And hopefully, and we'll figure out a way, we're going to bring it back next year for 2021 and make that our 10th annual Lions Club Car Show. In light of this, what I really want to talk about is the fact that Independence Public Works has done a phenomenal job for us over the course of the last nine years. They have helped us. They have made sure that facilities were ready for us. They have provided street control. They provided garbage pickup. Everything we've asked of them, whether it's just a few cones to direct traffic or actually allowing us to use up a street. Independence Public Works has done for us. And we are so appreciative of that. And we really wanted to make sure that everybody else knew what integral part they play in this great event. So earlier this year, it was the City of Independence Public Works was nominated for an award by, for the Central Lions Club of Monmouth Independence. Well, that went to our Board of Directors and they thought that was a great idea. And they not only decided that it was such a great idea that Independence Public Works was given some sort of recognition, they actually took it to the Lions, Oregon Lions Sight and Hearing Foundation. And they provided an honor roll award to the City of Independence Public Works Department for their participation and support of our car show. So I want to read this little note that comes with the award. So bear with me while I put my glasses on. "The Oregon Lions Sight and Hearing Foundation is dedicated to screen, treat, save, and restore sight and hearing in partnership with Lions Clubs in order to prevent blindness and deafness for those in need. Today, it is our honor and privilege to provide, to honor the Independence Public Works Department with the foundation honor roll award." Maybe you can all see that. "The honor roll award recipient is selected by the leadership of the Lions Club for their efforts in lionism and exemplifying our motto, 'We serve.' We trust that Independence Public Works will accept the award with pride and spread the message that our foundation works in partnership with the Lions Clubs of Oregon to prevent blindness and deafness to those in need." So along with that comes a pin, they call it a lapel pin, but perhaps there's a suitable banner that this can be put on. But I'd like to present this and what I'll do is I'll set it on the table over here so that the mayor doesn't have to touch it. But anyway, on behalf of the Central Lions Club and all of the folks who have participated in this wonderful event for the last nine years, we say thank you and congratulations and we honor the City of Independence and in particular, Independence Public Works. Thank you.
Danny, thank you so much for recognizing the wonderful work that city staff do. And I know I speak for all the council when they do a great job. So do you folks. You folks do so much in the community. You make a real difference on so many levels and this is about what a community is about. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for recognizing the outstanding work of our public works folks and for making this community stronger each and every time an activity happens. So thank you so very much.
Absolutely our pleasure and you allow me one shameless plug. We are still trying to get our point set of sale done this year because we did lose the car show as one of our fundraisers. So there you go. But thank you very much, Mayor. I really appreciate it. And hopefully, we'll be able to get that show back into the park.
Great. Now, you may have been muted, so I just want to let the audiences watching, they are trying to get their point set of show, their point set of sale up and running and they'll keep us informed because it's an important fundraiser for them. And you were muted there, Danny, but we will make sure to let everybody know.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Now that Danny's left the room, I can take my mask off. The next presentation is going to be Commissioner Pope and Brent Demoe from Pope County. And they're going to be doing this electronically. And so Jason, if you'll connect those folks in. Good evening, gentlemen, and welcome to the Independent City Council meeting.
Thank you.
Good evening. Glad to be here. Hey, I think I'm going to kick things off. Do I have the ability to share my screen there?
I think you do, Jason. Can we do that?
Yes, you do, Brett.
All right. Give me, give me just a second. I'll keep you in suspense. Let me provide just a little bit of background. Before COVID hit, our county was very interested in looking at really what was a childcare crisis in Polk County way before March even happened. We did a pretty comprehensive study of how many childcare slots we had available throughout the county. We surveyed parents and we surveyed business leaders. And I'm just going to share a little bit about what that data told us. The state of Oregon declared Polk County a childcare desert last year. And what that means is there is only one licensed childcare spot for every three kids and that's what a desert is. In Polk County, there was only one slot for every 12 kids. That's the shortage that we were facing. We also asked parents how hard it was to find childcare. And 85% of the parents told us it was either impossible or near impossible to find quality childcare in the city or town where they lived or worked. 44% of the parents told us that they missed up to a week of work or more because of childcare issues. Further, businesses reported to us that of their top 10 personnel issues, tardiness, absence, and productivity loss to childcare issues was among the top 10. So we were starting to put together a plan in the county of how to address that when March happened and COVID hit. And what that did within three days is 13 of our childcare facilities in Polk County closed. And we lost to 200 slots in less than a week. And as things started opening back up, phase one and phase two, and parents were trying to go back to work, they found that they didn't have childcare anymore. And any of you that have school age children are suddenly realizing, man, I sure wish we had a lot more childcare in Polk County to help with this issue right now. So that's kind of the background part of how bad the problem is. I'm going to let Commissioner Pope jump in now because our Board of County Commissioners actually did something that nobody else is doing in Oregon. Commissioner?
Thanks, Brent, and good evening to all of you. Thanks for the opportunity for us to make a quick presentation to you here on what we are doing with regard to childcare funding. So the Board of Commissioners determined that first rural broadband was a considerable need for families and working folks that had poor or no service. And that childcare was right in there with that as critical service needs that we believed we probably should spend some CARES Act dollars on if we had it. And so that childcare assistance program that we're working on came from our realization that Polk County would likely have a considerable sum of CARES Act allocation that could be used for childcare. So I spent a fair amount of time researching this and working with our county council to determine whether or not we could actually use CARES Act dollars for that sort of work. Fair amount of time working with regional solutions staff, the governor's office, and make sure that we actually had a green light to do it because we didn't want to get anybody running in that direction in the childcare world and then have to tell them, oh, sorry, it really isn't, you can't do this. So we had some work we had to do there. So then I ended up convening a group of providers and early learning professionals to consider the potential needs and how investments could help. And once we had an understanding of what needs might look like, the Board of Commissioners allowed me to move forward with planning and implementing a grant program managed by our great team of family and community outreach folks. So we ran a subsequent survey that developed, that helped us to develop and distribute to childcare providers in Polk County, which informed our process to open a grant program. This process has now delivered 30 award recipients across the county with eight of those in Independence. So when I started this question and this conversation with the childcare community, we didn't really know how much money we were going to have, but there was a potential to be as much as a million dollars that could be spent. So I started this conversation with that question. If you had a million dollars to spend in childcare needs across the county, what would you do? And so that's what we used our think tank group for to help figure that out. And it was fascinating that once I threw that question out there with that big of a number, we found out fairly quickly about how many resources really are available across a number of agencies at the state to help childcare providers, then help inform childcare providers about what was available to them. And that included, by the way, personal protective equipment and cleaning supplies, which we had a number of, through our survey process, we had a number of our providers respond that they needed help just in PPE and cleaning supplies. And frankly, those things were pretty much there for them. They just hadn't been able to get connected. So we were helping educate folks. So anyway, in this process, as I think I alluded to, has delivered 30 award recipients across the county. Eight of those are in Independence so far. We have hit, we're probably going to hit the $200,000 range. $200,000 for that group of folks. I'm going to let Brett talk about the details. But I will just tell you before I turn it back over to him, again, you can see the chart here for, Brett, you might make it a little bit bigger if you can. You know, the folks that are, the requests that have come in, I would really had, I had hoped that we would have a lot bigger needs in this. But we didn't put caps on anything as far as amounts. We didn't lead any of the providers to, you know, an outcome. We did tell them that they couldn't buy property and couldn't build a building with this money because there wasn't going to be enough to do that. But beyond that, we gave the, each of the applicants plenty of latitude. And then Brent and his team have worked with them and coached them and I'll stop there and let Brent take it.
Sure. I'll talk just a little bit more and then see if y'all have any questions. So one of the reasons I was excited to come to Independent City Council, as you can see, if you went purely by how many awards per city, Independence was the most. And some of you might wonder, well, why is that? And I think something that might be a little known fact with this group is there has been something going on in Independence for the last 15 years called focused childcare networks. Basically, our local childcare resource and referral agency, which is run out of Salem by Community Action, they've had a Spanish childcare network and an English childcare network going on for 15 years where they provide staff support and technical assistance every month with a group of childcare providers. And they basically become like a professional cohort. They do more training than is required by the state. They have more quality environment than is what, than is what is required by the state. And so it's no surprise to me that when they had an opportunity to look for a way to keep their place in business or to expand, that 84,000 of the investment that we're going to do, which is around 175,000, is coming right from Independence. At a later date, at a later time, we can give you guys more information about what focused childcare networks do and what some of the gaps might be. I've had some initial conversations with leadership at the city about some exciting things for next year to maybe provide some business opportunity, some business training for childcare providers, which is much needed. Commissioner Pope talked about that there were some resources available for childcare providers for PPE and cleaning supplies. It was very, it was, you had to sign up for it and you could only get a certain amount. So one of the things that we're also doing with these funds is, is helping to provide a supply of PPE and cleaning, you know, like a three month supply. Because what we heard from childcare providers, and this is somewhat, this is close, but it's not word for word. The average childcare center was spending $80 a month related to cleaning. And some of them are spending upwards of 800 for cleaning now because of the new requirements. And also, I know Counselor Martin Willis has a background in childcare because we worked together years ago. It used to be that you could have, you know, 20 preschoolers in a room or a gym with 45 kids after school. Now the maximum group size in childcare is 10. And it has to be the same kids. So this is the crisis that we're facing and we really see this as a workforce issue, getting people back to work. And of course, a quality issue. So parents know their kids are somewhere safe while they're doing that essential kind of work. We're going to take a pause right there. If you want me to send you this handout, I definitely will. I'm going to stop sharing my screen and just see if you guys have any questions for us at all.
Questions for the presenter? Anybody have anything?
I'd just like to take him up on his offer, if maybe he could get that form to Karen. She could distribute it to council. I know I personally would find that really helpful. And I just want to thank both Commissioner Pope and Brent for the amazing work that they're doing. I've been recently actually talking with parents about childcare issues. And it is, it's hugely problematic right now. So thank you for the work that you're doing and getting those funds into the hands of our providers here in Independence. Much appreciated.
And I would agree with Counselor Martin Willis. I have been attending the Pope County Commission meetings. So I had a little preview of this and it is very, very encouraging to hear how CARES dollars are being spent to provide for childcare. I didn't know that Independence was the biggest winner on this, but in, in fact, I'm not really surprised because we've been doing so many things right during this pandemic. So thank you to Brett and to Commissioner Pope for coming and making that presentation.
You bet.
Additional questions? Okay. Anything else for us, gentlemen?
No problem. Thank you for having us and I'll get that sent away right away.
Well, thank you for taking the time to keep us informed. Thank you for your efforts and creativity. Because this is the kind of thing that helps the economy, helps families, helps everybody and makes a real difference. And I think going forward, past COVID, there'll be opportunities and some additional understanding of what the needs of the community are. So thank you, gentlemen, for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move forward. Mr. Wilkson, Wixon will be joining us under public comment. And he's here personally. Karen's getting the thing situated. Good evening, sir, and welcome.
Thank you.
And you have five minutes to address the council this evening. Welcome to city council.
Okay. I hope that you all got a copy of the letter that I sent to the mayor. This is an issue which has been bothering me for some time. There is a lamp pole, middle by side driveway. The side driveway is the one that goes to the rear of the house. And it's the one that leads to my hangar. It's the only way I can get things in and out of my hangar. So it's very important. Now, there is a lamp pole that is obstructing the side driveway. And that is proven by the fact that when I had a delivery made on May 19th, the delivery truck struck the pole. There was no way for him to avoid it, it appears. And I simply requested that the city move that pole out of my driveway. Now, this was reported evidently to Kai Cotum. And he, I'm not sure he looked at it, but he said, this is in the correct location and the pole is five feet from my existing driveway. I don't know what he's talking about. Go past my house, 634 Seska Street, and you will see that it is in my side driveway. And the fact that the truck hits it, hit it, would seem to be pretty much confirmation that can't be ignored. Anyhow, he has, he has his facts wrong. And it would be a very easy thing for the city to simply move or to tell Pacific Power to move that pole out of my driveway so I can get in and out of it. Kai said I should contact Pacific Power. And I did this, of course, but their response was instead of moving the pole, to straighten it up for which they sent me a bill. Now, that doesn't help me at all. And what I said in my letter, which you have, each have a copy of, is that the employee of Pacific Power I talked to must have, first of all, I don't think she had the power to move that pole. And secondly, she said, well, we've heard from this, from the city and they don't, they don't want this. So she must have figured that if the city doesn't care, why should she care? In any case, this is very far from resolved. And that's why I wrote a letter to Mayor McArdle and copied to you. I would like that pole to be moved out of my driveway so I can get to it. And I would add two more things. First of all, I hope that the decision is made by the council because the building department or whatever Kai Cotum is in, is not elected to make these decisions. It's not answerable to us. And there's, I don't know how they make decisions, how they decide these things, but the decision is yours and it's their job to carry out your decision. So I hope that you will decide to move that pole finally. And I would be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Pesamir, do you have anything that you want to add at this point?
Yeah, just a, just a couple of things. This item was brought before council back, I believe, in late May, early June of this year. And we certainly took a second look at it. And just let me kind of explain, you know, a couple of things. First off, the powerful pole is owned by Pacific Power. It is not a city utility. It is in the city right of way. The power pole to the best of our analysis is located directly between the two properties. So Mr. Wixon's property and the property adjacent to it. So it's essentially on the property line towards the curb away from, from where the property corner is. I think, you know, I addressed this. I did send a letter to Mr. Wixon back on June 17th. And really, the reality is, is we have a franchise agreement with Pacific Power, which outlines responsibilities for different parties. And that franchise agreement is in place for exactly these reasons, to determine what is a public benefit, what is a private benefit, whose responsibilities are to do things. And so that franchise agreement was actually adopted by council. And council is subject to the terms of that agreement. That agreement basically says that the city can only ask for relocation of a Pacific Power utility pole if there's a public benefit. As we look at this, we certainly feel that there's a benefit to Mr. Wixon, but that doesn't necessarily become a benefit to the public in general. It also outlines who's obligated to pay if it is for private development or a private entity. And that would be the responsibility of the private customer, but ultimately that is up to Pacific Power. That's not up to the city to decide who that would be. They certainly could, if they chose to work and do that. But I think typically in this, so I guess from, from our analysis and according to the franchise agreements, we don't even have the right to ask Pacific Power to move it. And I think that's kind of where we sit at this point.
Okay. I would like to respond to this.
Briefly, sir.
I would say this, that the letters that I got had the facts wrong, as I pointed out. And I mentioned that also in the letter that you've got. Because they don't seem to recognize that this is in fact in my driveway because they deny that. And secondly, Pacific Power gets its money from you, the city, and that means from us, the taxpayer. So as far as public utility is concerned, if everybody had a pole in his side driveway, that would certainly affect the public. So what I'm saying is that if I have a strong feeling that if the city would say to the Pacific Power, please move that pole, they'd be happy to do it. It's very little trouble for them and it's a huge, it would be of a huge benefit for me. Whereas if the city doesn't seem to care, then as I say, they're not going to care. And finally, I say that the decision should be of elected officials, meaning you. And I can only add to this, if it were in your driveway, you wouldn't like it either. So, any other questions?
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I understand that this is a, is it a power pole or a?
Lamp pole.
So, and it, according to the statement that we heard from Mr. Pesamir earlier, it is sitting on the property line.
Not true and drive by. Look at it. And it's certainly in my driveway and that's very obvious.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, can you, can you elucidate on whether it's on the property?
To the best that I can see, it is fairly close to centered on the property line, maybe a split or two the other direction. I think, you know, as far as the city is concerned, that property only has one driveway. And it's clearly marked as a driveway drop is concrete that goes into the driveway area. Mr. Wixon is arguing that he has a secondary driveway, which is located further to the side of his property. But that certainly is not an official driveway that the city would recognize.
This I would like to respond to.
So, so here's what, here's what we're going to do. Rather than having a debate back and forth, I'm going to suggest, sir, that you set up an appointment with the city manager and visit about this. And then you guys can go over the details because that would be a that would be a better, a better forum to have the, have any discussion. Mr. Pesamir, are you amenable to that?
Yeah, glad to come out, actually, and meet him out there so we can look at the situation and make sure we're, we're agreeing on what the, what the issues are.
And I'm going to stand by my request that the city council take notice of this. Because every driveway, he doesn't seem to think that the second driveway counts for everything. But every single house in the airpark has two driveways, one to the garage and one to the rear. So I'm just like everybody else who lives there. And this pole is blocking my driveway and you can drive by and see it for yourself. So please, council, take this, take this into consideration.
I just want to add on one comment. And that's that I'm very, very familiar with franchise agreements. And I know how binding they are. And I do know that the city council approved of the franchise and signed on to the franchise for Pacific Power. So it's not just a one entity decision.
I have no quarrel with the franchise. I'm just saying that if you ask them to move them, they would.
Hey, Tom, do you think you could just like snap a picture while you're out there?
Of course, glad to.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Mayor, I did have one.
Yeah.
Not sure if it's germane, I guess, which came first, the chicken or the egg? The lamp post or the driveway would be my question.
Just a minute, sir. Did you get the, did you hear the question from Counselor Martin Willis?
No.
Please repeat the question, Counselor Martin Willis.
So essentially, which came first, the lamp post or the driveway?
I don't know when it was put in. I just bought the property two years ago, so I don't know the history of it.
So it was existing on the property when you put this?
It was put on there and in that position when I bought the property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so here's what I'm going to do at this point. I'm going to let Mr. Wixson and Mr. Pesamir visit about this and move forward from there. I want to thank you for taking the time to come in and visit today. And I know that you and Mr. Pesamir will be able to take a look at this and figure out where, what lines are and move forward from there.
I say thank you, please don't forget me, and this is why I voted for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Karen, do we have other people out there for public comment? I, that's a no from Karen with a shaking of head. We're going to go to reports and presentations, and I have several things to report. And so yesterday, I had Congressman Schrader here in Independence. Mr. Pesamir and I had a chance to visit with him. I had contacted the congressman about Highway 51 and 22. Since I'm the only person in the room now, I can take off my mask. So we talked to him about the issues related to safety at Highway 51 and 22. He could see the concern. We shared some draft ODOT information with him, and he was very interested. And both for the, the safety issues, the first responders that are generally volunteers that have to respond to the crashes out there and the economic impact. He does serve on the Commerce Committee. So I just wanted to let you know that we're moving forward on that. Recently had a meeting with Kathy Clark, the mayor of Kaiser. And we had a chance, she is the chair of the Mid Willamette Valley Homeless Alliance. And she was talking to me a little bit about some of the efforts that they're putting forth. And pretty exciting. And I want to call out Counselor Core, who she said is doing a great job. And I wanted to just let the whole world know that the vice chair, or the chair, excuse me, is finding your, your passion and energy very helpful to the committee. So congratulations to you, Counselor Core. Late last week, I had a chance, as many of you know, I serve on the Governor's Regional Solutions Advisory Committee. We've also now been tasked since the fires with the Santee Am Canyon Economic Recovery. We meet weekly on that. I met with the mayor of Detroit, Jim Tret. He came here to Independence. I bought him a pizza, you know, when your town burns down, you at least got to get something. And we talked about what some of the needs are up in the canyon. My goodness, what challenges they are facing. And I also want to shout out that City Recorder Johnson has also providing some additional information and support to as many other cities are. But it was a real opportunity, and then I was able to advocate for many of the smaller cities in our regional meeting the next day. On a lighter note, I got a chance, you know, this year is the 53rd iteration of the tree lighting at Western Oregon University. And so I got a chance to do a welcome on behalf of the city of Independence. They're going to do a virtual event for this year. And so I got a chance to do something that's kind of fun. And because that holiday tree has a little bit of a special meaning to some of us. I asked a certain young lady to get married under it on a cold December night many years ago. And also have had some really wonderful, some of my very good friends, amongst them, Paul Evans. He had come back home from Iraq and had rented a car. And because when he and some of the other folks from his unit, they knew they were home when they were there at the tree lighting. And they were there in their, in their camo. And they still had Iraqi dirt on their boots. And it was a really special thing. So that annual event always has a little bit of touch in my heart. So that's some of the things that I've been involved on. I'm going to go to Counselor Takeus now, who will talk a little bit about both traffic safety and historic preservation. Counselor Takeus.
Okay, so the first thing, traffic safety. I was unable to attend, but through the magic of video, I got to watch the movie. Watch the, watch the recording of the, the meeting. A couple of things that, that frequently come up is we get complaints from residents about speeding in residential areas. And often the suggestion is put in speed bumps. And we look at speed bumps, they're very expensive, there's some drawbacks to them. We're still looking at them possibly in some areas where it might make sense. But I think what the Traffic Safety Commission is leaning towards is investing more like speed abatement signs, like flashing signs tell you how fast you're actually going, that sort of thing. So we're leaning in that direction and looking to investigate that a little more. And the other thing that happened was we've been working on a street parking code update, and they did actually pass that. So I think we'll be seeing it soon. I think there's some little tweaks that need to be done to it. But I think we'll probably be seeing a code change for street parking coming up shortly. Then on, move on to Historic Preservation Commission. That meeting was canceled for, for this month and was rescheduled for November 5. And if I understand correctly, we're going to have actually two meetings in November. Is that right, Karen? I believe that's right. Anyway, so Thursday, November 5, and then there'll be another meeting, November 18, a regular meeting. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Core, I think you have an Independence Day's commission update.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on the 8th of October. There was some discussion about what went well with the modified event this year and what didn't go well. But the, the crux of the meeting was focused around what are we going to do next year? We don't know what kind of situation we're going to be in yet, obviously. One concern is that many carnival companies have not survived coded. So it's likely we won't have a carnival. That's a big revenue generator for this event. So the commissioner asked all the commissioners to come to the next meeting with ideas about what we could possibly replace a carnival with. And that was adjusted to me.
Thank you, appreciate that. And I just want to go on record again is how creative the commission was in having five events, five micro events that made us a special impact for so many, especially young families in our community. And I, I, instead of just punting it like so many other places did, they really did a nice job. So I continue and thank you. Mr. Pesamir, I think it's time for the city manager report.
So thank you, Mayor, counselors. I don't have a lot tonight, so I know we had a bunch of presentations. But I know a number of you were able to go on a museum site visit with Carly. If you weren't able to meet that, make that, please let Carly or Karen know. If you still want to see it, Public Works has actually started construction this week. And so they are working on it. I believe the mayor actually was there to do a little golden hammer ceremony to, to kind of kick things off. But we definitely wanted to recognize the efforts of our Public Works Department. They're, they're essentially trying to save the city some money by doing some of the pre-work. A portion of the concrete floor, maybe 10% of it just didn't have good subgrade. And so it kind of tipped off towards the back of the building. So they're tearing that out. They're also tearing out a bunch of the light fixtures and some, some other things to just prepare it. So when we get that contract moving forward, that work is already done. So appreciate their efforts. And again, if you want to get in there and see it, now's a good time before we have contractors in there, and you can't until it's done. I wanted to mention that we, I authorized a payment to Willamette Workforce Partners in the amount of $55,525. I mentioned that because we have some rules that the city manager has the authority to adopt. Approved contracts up to $50,000 that weren't budgeted. This was obviously a little bit over that. Obviously, we have the emergency order in place. So I have the authority to do that. But I certainly want to let you know that I did that. That money is going to be going towards the business grants, and that money will get out quick. That's already underway. And people are implying we are certainly pushing that out there and trying to encourage people to apply. I know Ramon is personally helping some people to apply. Because we want to definitely get that money out there and make some things. So I just wanted to give you that information, since it was slightly over my authorized amount. Let me know if you have any questions about that. We've talked a lot about the technical assistance grant program. We've talked a lot about the grant program. We've talked about, a lot about the loan forgiveness. And Sean Irvine shared kind of a example of how one of our local businesses is doing exactly what they hope they would, we hope they would do. And there's a lot more of that. So Parallel 45 is using the technical assistance program to develop an online order platform for crowlers. I didn't know what a crowler was until I, I heard this. But apparently, it's a large can that functions like a growler. So I think that's where the name comes. And so, you know, we, we set up this technical assistance program specifically to go out and say, okay, during COVID, how can you use online resources? How can you use other business resources? How can you use social media or whatever that program that you need in order to expand your business? And this is, this is what they did. So they use that technical assistance program to come up with that online platform. And then they're going to use the city grant program to purchase a crowler sealer and an inventory of empty cans. So that's a great example of how you partner these programs up and exactly what we were hoping. And one of the reasons that we kind of staged the timing of these to, to be together because we want that creative idea to come through the technical assistance program and then be able to use grants to actually do something to grow their business and survive through what's, you know, a difficult time. They're also probably going to use munchies to distribute that. So, so yet another program that we all put in place. So a lot of hard work went into that. I know that Sean has been involved with that. Courtney's been involved in that. And also Kate from Indy Commons on the Technical Assistance Program has been doing great work. So glad to see that all coming together finally. The utility assistance program flyer was finished today through Mono Amado. So we'll be pushing that out here in the next few days. Looks great. We're really excited to finally get that up and, and hopefully that carries through the end of the year to help some of our residents who are struggling to pay utilities, whether it be city utilities or garbage utilities or my net or whatever. So, so we're excited to get that out there. And then just kind of a preview of one thing that is coming up is a holiday light display. Courtney Williams has been working hard on trying to get a lot more lights placed around the amphitheater and in that area. So it'll be launching the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And our hope is that it turns gloopy place into a, a nice place. Our intent is to add to that exhibit every year and to create a much more robust light display over time. So with that, that's all I have. But I, I will say that if you have any questions or concerns about the format of what we're doing here, we're really restricted in, in trying to make sure we're accurately following the governor's rules and orders. But if you have comments on how we can improve this council meeting or thoughts, please let me or Karen know, and we'll be happy to, to think about that and to put things into place. We, we made some modifications even this week, based on the new mask requirements to, to do that. But if you have thoughts or, or questions, let us know. And then if you have any questions for me or my staff, please let me know.
Um, just in case somebody doesn't know, what are the new mask requirements?
Well, essentially, if you're indoors, you are required to wear a mask. And unless you're at your office desk, then you're, you're really required to be wearing a mask. And so I, I think that's just the general rule that we have here at City Hall. And why, you know, we certainly, the city recorder, the mayor, and I could be all the council chambers, but we would all be having to wear masks at that particular time. Just as a preview, the Occupational Safety and Health Authority is going to be coming out with new rules here very soon. Probably be implemented the second week of November. At least that's the timeline that there are, they are on. And they will impact not only City Hall and the way we do things, but also a lot of other businesses out there. So if you're a business, make sure that you're keeping your eye on that because it's OSHA. And everybody knows OSHA has the, the authority to not only come in and, and find, but to investigate any complaints, including complaints by your employees. So I'm not worried. I don't think it's going to, to change the, the service levels that we're able to, to provide. But I definitely think we will be having to document a lot more items and things at the city in order to comply with that, that new, those new rules.
Great. Thank you very much. We're going to keep moving forward. Under staff reports, Gloria Butch has a first quarter financial report for us. Good evening, Ms. Butch.
Hi.
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm not sure why you can't see me. I'm not sure what I've done there, but. Oh, there, okay, I see it. Okay, can you see me now?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so feeling a little under the weather, but try to get through this, and I think we'll be fine. We're one quarter of the way through the year. As I say in my report, most of, for the most part, our budget comparison is about below 25% for overall expenditures. And the revenues appear to be above 25%. Note that beginning fund balances in the reports are an estimate until completion of the audit. Wanted to let you all know that there is a possibility that our audit could be delayed. So we're scheduled for fieldwork next week. That's a, that's still a go. But because of the, the CARES Act monies that we received and combined with some other larger grants, we hit the beyond 750,000 mark this last fiscal year. And that's going to trigger what's called a single audit. And because there's not any good compliance documentation yet from the federal government about the CARES Act monies, the auditors may be delayed in being able to perform that single audit. So going into the beginning fund balances, for the general fund, were estimated to be higher than the budget had estimated. There are several factors that attributed to this. Though primarily, they were the receipt of the CARES funds, which was 561,000 over the budgeted amount. which was 561,000 over the budgeted amount. Other revenue that came in over budget were taxes. The support for this school resource officer program, a state shared revenue and franchise fees and some untest, the untapped anticipated reimbursement from the state unemployment benefits fund, which I believe I reported to you on one of the quarters earlier in the year. All of this totaled 440,000. So we got pretty close to this. Those two things combined comes pretty close to what we came over in the general fund. I wanted to do a breakout to that we ended up below budget expenses and administration for the housing grant, economic development for various grants and police department for personnel services and materials and services. So all combined, it kind of equaled everything out for, to attribute to that budget, the overage on our beginning fund balance. Currently, the grant revenues in the general fund and expenditures often flow through from one fiscal year to the next. And it's difficult to predict that timing when we're preparing the budget because we just don't know if they're going to come in before the year end or not. Moving on, the beginning fund balance for the sewer fund is less than we anticipated by approximately 490,000. Most of this is attributed to the timing of expenditures and receipt of the loan proceeds for the sewer projects. The balance of this difference is that we were actually over budget in charges for services. The revenue line and under budget and materials and services. So this all came up to the the difference in the anticipated beginning fund balance for the water fund and the storm drain fund beginning fund balances they're over. These are primarily attributed to expenditures for materials and services and capital outlay being well below budget. Staff worked really hard on keeping spending down whenever possible to con to counteract the lost revenue caused by the pandemic. We knew that was coming when we was preparing the budget, but, and we tried to respond in our budget as best we could. But obviously there was a lot of factors that we couldn't really anticipate. For the first quarter of this fiscal year, we, we expect revenues and expenditures to be as we, we usually expect revenues, sorry, revenues and expenditures to be about 25% of the budget. Expenditures now, right now are averaging below 25% and the revenues that vary are due to timing. For instance, most of the property tax revenues are received in November. We'll start seeing those most any time we'll start seeing the proper tax revenues since those bills have come out. Charges for services in the general fund are primarily regional library fees that are collected on a quarterly basis. And the first quarter will likely be received in October or November. So that's why you're not seeing the charges for services to be very much. Operating grants received are reimbursement grants. So far we have received 500 or 55,604 for the housing grant, 12,315 for the merit grant and the additional 10,684 is from various police, economic development and museum grants. Some of these grants are carryovers from the prior year. For instance, the merit grant, I believe, and Carrie, Karen could probably confirm one way or the other. I believe that merit grant is almost two years that we had, but would have budgeted for that. And so note that the transfer schedule year to date does not include the interfund loans, just as always, I've always reported this. We'd like to wait until the end of the year for the, to do those interfund loans. We often come come to the fact that those inner funds either are not necessary or some of the inner funds can be from prior years can be paid off. So we'd hold off on those. I also included in this report, the the Minnet debt service forecast for December. If we've got it early for December because they have to do Monmouth's portion of it for October. October is when Monmouth's portion is due. So for this year or for the December debt service, independents will need to cover 157,714. This is approximately $97 less, $97,000 less than the last December. And 63% of the amount budgeted for loans to my net, which is 250 for this year. The report, I have to apologize, that report is really, really small. So hopefully in your your electronic copy, you're able to blow that up and make it a little bigger so you can read it. No, that's all I have.
Questions for Ms. Butch? Looks like we're on time on target.
I, I had a question. So I know it's a little difficult to compare, you know, with past years and, and and some of the timing issues, but do you feel that the our revenue generating funds are reasonably stable? You know, we were concerned when COVID hit that, that, you know, we wouldn't be getting paid for a lot of stuff. It seems like we're pretty much getting paid one way or another. Is that a correct statement?
For the most part, yes. The, the building revenues are starting to flatten out a little bit. Not too bad though. Property taxes, it's hard to say how the property taxes are going to do until they start coming in.
Well, up to this point anyways, we're, we're doing pretty, pretty well.
Pretty good. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. And I'll just add one comment there because our revenues have been really coming in very close to projected. Our expenditures have been under what we anticipated. And that's largely because I told you, we're going to hold back on certain things, travel and training. And cost of living increases for anyone who is not covered by collective bargaining unit and other things. So we're feeling much more confident that things are coming in well. So I'm going to relax a little bit on the, the training, not the travel, obviously. But some of those items, just to make sure that we're getting people adequately trained. And I think the proof in the pudding will be coming at the end of November, when we see what our tax revenues come in at. If those tax revenues are close to what we anticipated and we'd certainly under budgeted a little bit there, understanding that there were the situation we were in. If, if that comes in, I probably will then go ahead and do the COLA starting January 1. That is in the budget for this year. We did budget that from January 1 on, but we wanted to wait and see and make sure that our revenues were coming in as, as they were expected. I won't have another chance to tell you that before I do it. So I want to bring it up now. So there's not a surprise.
Great. Okay. We're going to keep moving forward with the next staff report. Mr. Evander, you're going to give us a trolley update.
Hi there, everybody. Nice to see you. So yeah, I'm here to talk about the trolley tonight. So as I don't know how many of you know about the trolley project right now. Is everybody familiar with it at this point? Yeah. So great. So the deal is we are, we are studying the feasibility of a trolley now over the past number of years. Some folks here at the city of Independence, some folks over in Monmouth, some folks at Western Oregon University and just various other organizations sort of got together and they, they were talking about the concept of a trolley. Ultimately connecting downtown Independence and downtown Monmouth and Western Oregon University. Their ultimate vision was that we have sort of a historic, a historic trolley vehicle that went between the two downtowns. It would celebrate the history of the communities. It would enhance the economic vitality of the communities. And it would move people more efficiently between the communities. And ultimately, hey, Karen, do you got that slideshow available? Anyways, one of the precedents that they had for the route was apparently a train line that went between the two communities. So show the next slide. If you would. This is a picture of the train and I actually got this from Carly earlier today. You can see it says 1890 right there at the bottom. The precedent was ultimately this train line. And this is sort of what they were envisioning sort of being a precedent for the route. Apparently Sean tells me, I don't know much about this, but this train line was originally called the Peanut Roaster. Is that correct?
Yes.
Roaster. So anyways, that was sort of the, the vision that the group had. So in the exploration of the idea and sort of thinking about it, they thought, hey, this is great. We can enhance economic opportunity, vitality through the communities. We can help Western Oregon universities sort of address some of their parking needs. We can more move people more efficiently through the town. We can get some of the students better off the campus and to the downtown areas of Independence and whatnot. And we can use this nice hotel that we have and ultimately tie that to downtown Monmouth and the campus and all this sort of stuff. So seeing the potential merit of all of those ideas, the, the state ultimately gave us a grant to study this further. And we are the ones that are sort of managing this grant. Now, where are we now? With this funding, we went out, we hired a consultant, we're working with Walker Consultants. And I just got to say they're, that they are a good group of folks to be working on this project with. They, they like, I don't know, what, what eat, sleep and drink transit and parking stuff and transportation. It's really interesting. So they're helping us with this. And, and we've formed a steering committee. We've met with those folks a couple of times. And we're, we're trying to, to sort of come up with how a system like this might work. And we're really throwing out everything. Where do we serve? What sort of vehicle do we use? What does the service look like? All of this sort of stuff. How can we build on chariots? All of these questions are things that we're sort of asking as part of this study. So now we are moving into the survey sort of thing, the public input about various ideas. And so Karen, next slide, if you could. So we are having a survey right now. You can see here is the link for the survey. We would appreciate anybody to fill out this survey. And people who do, they have a chance to win one of four $25 gift cards. So, so far you've got a lot of competition. Apparently earlier today, our consultant wrote us, said we have 808 surveys so far. I think a lot of that is because it did go out on the campus and we did get a lot of feedback from those folks, but we want more input. We want to see what the, the actual viability of this idea is and, and what folks think could work. So based on all of that, where are we going with this study? Ultimately, we are going to prepare a feasibility study that really identifies what we can do to improve transit period in the community and ultimately achieve something like a trolley, like was originally envisioned. And we're considering all sorts of options right now. We're, we're, we're looking at chariots real good to see how can we enhance their service and their community? Can we partner with them somehow? Can we expand their service somehow? Can we rework their service somehow to really help it serve the community? We're looking at how we can make a trolley work. And we're also considering a whole bunch of innovative options and really it's those innovative options that are really getting me pretty excited about this project. So ultimately that is where the trolley project is at. So I guess spread the word about the survey, take the survey yourself. If you have any thoughts about the project or anything, let me know. And yeah, always happy to talk about it. So are there any questions about that?
Well, thank you for your work on this. I know that it's something that has been kicked around for a long time. I really appreciate the legislative funding that was able to take it from abstract to actually work its way and the old peanut roadway. And that's why some of the streets and, and Monmouth and and some other places in town were extra wide because that's where the, the track rolled down the middle. So anyway, thank you so much. We're going to, we're going to continue moving forward. And Mr. Irvine, I think you have amending the Independence Municipal Code, streets, sidewalks and public places.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor and Council for letting me be to do this presentation tonight. I'm here to talk about, first off, we're going to talk about the, let me pull up the right staff report here. We're going to talk about change to municipal code language. There's a couple of, you know, really in many ways kind of housekeeping items that were, we want to tweak about the municipal code, chapter 26. You see from the staff report, it's really kind of two separate issues that we've combined because they both happen to fall within chapter 26. The first deals with street trees. Right now our tree code essentially asks how see if a, if a resident wants to remove or replace a street tree that has to go to the tree board, which is also the Parks and Recreation Committee. There is a pretty specific criteria laid out for when a street tree can be removed. And there's really not a lot of wiggle room. So it's a pretty straightforward decision. The Parks Committee tends to meet on a, on a fairly infrequent basis. So it kind of in the interest of moving things along promptly, we wanted to recommend changing this to a, to a staff level decision for, for these, you know, kind of straightforward decisions, the way that, the way it's outlined in the code. Similarly, on the, on the dog park side, the dog parks been around for a number of years now. I think we're really successful by any measure in terms of usage, really, you know, not seeing, you know, kind of significant problems, although there are some, some incidents here or there. One issue they, they have, you know, kind of based on those issues that have come up and the simple fact that we haven't updated the rules since it opened. I know the police department got together with code enforcement and proposed a few tweaks to the, to the rules, which I think are pretty clearly outlined in the, in the language and the staff report. Both of these recommended changes did go to the Parks Commission and were recommended to council for approval. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for staff?
And I just have one question about the dog park. Under the section 452, which defines aggressive and dangerous dogs. When I went looking for that, it was really hard to find. I mean, I'm still finding it really difficult to find code without using the search bar on the website. So I just want to point that out. Secondly, when I did find that section, I, I expected to see a list of dog breeds that are characterized as such. I was pleased to not see that because I don't think that's the proper way to do this. But just to not put off people with this, the way this section G is written, I would recommend that it say aggressive comma, dangerous dogs and potentially dangerous dogs, the characteristics of which are defined in section blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, that makes sense. Because those are, you know, kind of specific definitions. And so that is what, what you're referring to.
And I know you go on in later staff associated with this to further define that. So that's great. But I just wanted to make sure somebody didn't see this and think, oh God, there's a list of dangerous dogs. Dangerous dog breeds, should say.
Yeah.
Good point. So I, and not exactly a question on this, maybe sort of an extension on this. There have been on neighborhood, several comments regarding dogs off leash at Inspiration Gardens. And in walking mat, I noticed there are no signs specifically stating that dogs must be leashed. Had planned to bring that to parks this last meeting. We didn't meet. So I guess something for future consideration that we might want to beef up the signage and some of the other parks that are very popular for dog owners, Inspiration Gardens being one of those.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good point. We can, we can pass that on to Public Works because yeah, any, any city park currently dogs are required to be on leash except.
Right. Yep. Right. Which I understand. I think sometimes folks need a reminder that their dogs need to be on a leash. And it's been a very specific, specific problem at that particular location recently.
Additional questions? So point of clarification here. So the suggestion that Shannon made, the Council Corps made, do we need to add additional language in here? I certainly think that if Council Corps wants to make a motion and just kind of read out that additional language, then we can put that into the motion and do it. I think she kind of has her language that she, she wanted to see there. That sound okay, Council Corps?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to, to augment the language that's currently in section G to read aggressive comma dangerous dogs and potentially dangerous dogs, the characteristics of which are defined within section 4-52 are not allowed. And I can send that to Karen if you need it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And, and do I infer that without objection, does anybody object to adding that in? Without objection, it's in. And now we can go to the main motion. If that's okay, it is an ordinance.
I move to read the proposed ordinance. Council Bill 2020-10 in full as the text is contained and as it has been altered in the council packet for the first time.
I have a motion.
A second that.
Second by Counselor Takis. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Is there any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries.
An ordinance amending identified sections of the Independence Municipal Code, chapter four, animals, article three, dogs, and chapter 26, streets, sidewalks and public places, article seven, park trees and shrubs, and article nine, city parks and recreation areas, and declaring an effective date.
Hey, let's move to the second motion, please.
I move to read the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2020-10 for the second time by title only.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second by Counselor Ransom Smith. Is there discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion carries.
An ordinance amending identified sections of the Independence Municipal Code, chapter four, animals, article three, dogs, and chapter 26, streets, sidewalks and public places, article seven, park trees and shrubs, and article nine, city parks and recreation areas, and declaring an effective date.
The final motion, please.
I move to adopt the proposed ordinance, Council Bill 2020-10.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Counselor Martin Willis. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed? I hear no opposition. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
The bill has passed and will be assigned ordinance number 1584.
Mr. Irvine, I think you have 2040 plan adoption.
Yes. So at your last council meeting, I do recall Libby Bard from Barney and Worth attended and gave a presentation on the Vision 2040 Plan. You know, is just a quick recap, you know, kind of we generally here at the city for a number of years, 20 years actually, have really guided our, our efforts with these community-wide vision and action plans where we go out to the community and get everybody engaged. Get, you know, kind of that full perspective of, of the, the full population of the community to see where, where, where we need to go and what we need to do to get there. We did a plan in 1996. We did a plan in 2008. Both times we knocked off enough of those projects, it was time for another. And it seems like forever ago, but we did the Vision 2040 Plan back in 2019, wrapping up around in March. We got over two, 2,000 people participated in this plan. I think really kind of identified some great community priorities for continuing the positive direction of the community. And we're here tonight to adopt a, or request adoption resolution, formally adopting this plan because for it to really have the weight, and especially, you know, when we go after funding sources or talk to partners, it's great to be able to say, you know, look, city council has officially adopted this as, you know, as their own. And that gives it that extra weight as we go out there.
Great. We took the look at this last time. This is an action item.
I am very pleased to move to adopt resolution 20-1540 as submitted.
I have a motion.
A second, please.
Second by Counselor Martin Willis. Is there further discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed? I hear no opposition. The motion carries. Congratulations. We now have a roadmap.
Thank you.
Congratulations, everybody. This is, we now know where we're going and we have direction. And then staff can start putting things together. Let's go to, are there any announcements from council members?
Yes, I have one. The climate, the community climate task force is on the agenda to make a presentation on, at the November 10th meeting. I just wanted to let folks know they did do a presentation at the Monmouth City Council meeting earlier this month, and they'll be following that up with a work session. So signing work.
Thank you. Additional, additional, additional things? Anybody has?
Just a reminder, don't mail your ballots. Today was the last day. Drive them down to City Hall and vote. Make a plan and vote.
And I'll have you know, just before the council meeting, I was able to deposit my wife and my ballot in the city ballot. And so for everybody else watching, the rules are wear your mask whenever you're in a, in a building that's not your home. And if there are other people around, wear a mask, keep the people that we know and care about safe. Without objection, somebody adjourn us, please.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Have a pleasant evening. Thank you.
Thank you.